I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to section 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. C, Wisconsin statute, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to wit superintendent's performance evaluation.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Sittencov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carrier 7-0 will convene across the hall.
I move that the board convene in open session pursuant to section 19.85, Pren. 2, Wisconsin statutes, to consider the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Here.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney? Aye.
Sittencov?
Aye.
Warren? Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carrier 7-0 will reconvene our meeting. This is our work session meeting, and all seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, Sandy Heller, our board secretary, and we have two intercity student council members, Jamie Barbian, who's from West High School, and president of the intercity student council, and Monroe Corpus. She's from, you're from East High School. First is our public forum. It's an opportunity for members of the public to speak before the board. We, the board will provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. All speakers should fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters during this open forum, or brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited. Also, I want to remind the public that members, that the public can view our board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" at the top, and then "Board of Education" on the left. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak before the board during our open forum? Seeing none, then we will proceed to our agenda. First is a teaching and learning work session. That'll be facilitated by Ed Dorff.
Thank you. We have a discussion item, the West International Baccalaureate Mathematics Update. Mr. Magus?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Dorff. And I apologize if it's a little stepped up as well. But we had some conversation at our last meeting related to some, some changes at West High School that were proposed, and there was some work that was put into, to action as far as some initial course registration for students related to IB math offerings. And through further study, we, we looked into things a little more deeply. Sorry for the feedback. The IB courses that were released by the International Baccalaureate organization, the timeline for the release has been pretty tight for being able to incorporate them into the fall offerings for the, for the coming school year. We were doing our best work to try and make sure that that was done well and in place for the coming year, but we've decided that, that having a pause and allowing for further reflection, further development of, of their strategic plan and how they want those courses to proceed would make more sense. It appeared previously that there was a, a greater alignment with the Algebra II content within the courses that were going to be offered, and we just want to make sure that's the case before we're not having students take Algebra II as, as its offering. So, we're basically putting, putting a, a pause on it and allowing for opportunity to have students take, take both courses. Andrew?
You and others had a, a conference call with, with experts from the IB organization itself, and that since we last, since this last came up in a board meeting, and in fact, they didn't have, the IB organization itself was not able yet to provide the answers to the level that you'd be satisfied with basing a course recommendation off of it.
So, the plan at the board meeting was for us to have the conference call?
Yeah.
And the initial calls to set up the conference call showed that they're, that they weren't ready, so the, the need for that conference call wasn't there at that point. They, they decided that we were better off holding off because they didn't have-
So, IB was not even ready to have the conference call that we were ready to go and request it?
Yes. Okay. So, we were asking them to serve as a guiding resource for us. It's, it wasn't, it was all done with good intention, as we, we expressed previously. I think that there was a sense of urgency around making sure that West is promoting International Baccalaureate, and we're getting as many students into the diploma program as, as we want to serve, but we also have to make sure that we're doing things carefully and that we're making sure that our curriculum is, is clearly aligned with what our state guidelines are and what our district guidelines are as well, as well as best practice for preparing kids for college.
So, so there won't, another, another problem here is it's not, like IB isn't, it's not quite as simple as IB adding a second high, even higher math pathway, which somewhat they're doing, but in fact, all of the existing courses change to something new, right?
Right.
So, now, for those students who are doing, who are doing full diploma, what, what happens then so we can, will we, are we going to operate under the assumption that we'll, we'll be able to do the applications pathway?
Mm-hmm.
And it's very close, but, and we may have to change some things, but the analysis pathway would be a, a future addition, but there's no way that could be ready yet?
Right. Right. So, we've decided that in order to do it right, we're slowing down a bit to do it well.
So, no one, so no one who wants to be in, people who wish to be in IB math as juniors and seniors towards their diploma will have an opportunity to take some form of, of IB math.
Mm-hmm.
And then, in the future, I, I would hope we would be able to offer both pathways of, of math, because as, you know, as we had discussed, the, the, the IB Analysis HL is actually a very, well, I, I think it's a very impressive math course from what I've read about it, if that remains true once IB actually is ready to, to talk about it. It sounds like this, this, hopefully IB won't release a course change this close to a new school year, because I don't see how any, any school, any IB school in the world, I mean, people are going to be writing curriculum, scrambling to write curriculum this summer to offer these pathways.
If they're, if they're planning to offer in fall of '19.
If they're doing it next year, they will have to.
And as you pointed out too, that this isn't a, it's not a Green Bay problem. It's something that's, that's why it's bad.
No, we were ready for the, we, we asked for the conference call, and they said we're not ready to, well, they didn't have enough information to make it a worthwhile call.
Yeah, I think, that's my understanding.
Okay.
But I, but I want to make sure that anything that we bring forward from here, from here forward related to the change is clearly articulated, and we can offer a curriculum crosswalk between our current offerings and the new IB offerings to make sure that there's clear alignment and that, that all student needs are served.
Michelle?
He answered the question. So, we're good to go? I just wanted to, to make sure that you would bring that forward when you have that conversation and make sure that the board is apprised of what you've learned and, and bring that forward with any possible changes.
Sure. And I want to thank Michelle Jacobson, Cindy Cantwell, Mike Fries, and Judy Wiegand for, for the work that they did around this as well. It's, it's, sometimes the, the choice to go slow to go fast, it's not an easy choice when we want to do what's best for kids and move forward quickly, but it was the right choice in this circumstance.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Public comment?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Then, that's all we have.
Nicely done, yeah. Great.
That's organizational support, and that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right. We have no discussion-only items under Business and Finance or Human Resources. Discussion and public comment items, under Business and Finance, we have none. Under Human Resources, we have benefit renewals.
Should there be questions that the board members would like to ask them, and they'll come forward if, if they're called upon. I'd like to just begin by thanking all the board members who've met with us to review some of the details behind the recommendations that you have provided on Friday. We've tried to outline this memo so that we could take each section of the benefits and look at them one by one, and should the board be, have any questions that we can answer, we'll take them down and get answers to you so that, in two weeks, when you would be asked to vote, we would have your answers for you. I, I should also say that, in terms of the timeline, the vote that we would need to take would be necessary by March. So, if, if the board wishes to take more time and you need questions answered, we could go to March. But after March, it becomes very difficult to be able to provide our retirees and our employees with the information that they need to make their decisions, because we start open enrollment in, in May, and we need that amount of time to get the information to the employees.
Jean, are you saying March 1st?
It would be the March board meeting, which I think is in the middle of March when you would actually, we would need you to take action. That would be our last recommended time to take action on any of these. So, you know, it's possible that you may take some action in February or defer some things to March with, because you need more information, or, you know, whatever the board wishes. So, I'll begin by just, we outlined in the first paragraph of the memo, I'll be stepping through this and pausing to take questions and comments. We begin by framing up why we're, why we're doing this, and we are looking, as, as John Kosch has projected, between a $4 million, $6 million deficit for the next two years, and this is based on financial modeling that he does. We also maintain a 15.7% fund balance, which is above the Board of Education policy of 15%. Questions have come up as well, you know, if we want to continue to fund our health insurance, could we dip into the fund balance? And, and that, that's something that is, is not recommended. And wages and benefits comprise the 68% of our, of all of our spending. So, although we've been able to maintain some fairly, I would, depending how you look at it, fairly modest increase in health, health insurance compared to some of our competitors in the market, and we provide a very good plan. This year, we were looking at a 12.63% increase that would be needed to sustain our current plan designs, and that's in medical. So, we, we ask ourselves, what, what could we do so that we could bring that down? Because the district funds, the employee pays 12%, and the district funds the balance of that. So, the increase to the employee would be, you know, the 12.63%, which when you look at it, might, somebody might consider, well, that, that's modest, but the, the funding that the district would have to have would be far greater. We would incur a $5 million increase in medical plan costs for next year if we were to pass on the 12.63%. And given the outlook for the overall budget, based on the modeling, we feel that we need to bring that down. So, what we looked at is, the 250 plan is where most of our employees are, and we're recommending to bring that plan from a $250 deductible for single to 500, and from a $750 family deductible to 1500. And then the out-of-pocket max would increase 2,000 for single and be 4,000 for a family.
What does it now?
1,000.
1,000, 2,000.
And, what are the premiums on that?
The premiums that you have were in the attachment, so I'll just, I'll just turn to that. So, what the attachments that you have are, are doing is, it's looking at what the active employees are currently looking at. So, the $200 deductible, and we, we have a different premium for people who take the personal health exam and the people who do not. So, I'll, I'll quote you the ones who do take the personal health exam, because the majority do do that. So, the premium for the single is $93.20 a month. The employee spouse is $191.08 a month. The employee plus children, child or children, 172.44 a month, and then the family is $242.34 a month. And then, the table that is attached takes you from what is current in, and to the new, which would be the new $500 deductible with the out-of-pocket increasing. So, just to give you an example, the increase in a year, I'll, I'll take it to a year, is, let's see, I want to make sure I've got the right numbers, $83.40 for the single. Employee spouse, 170.76. The employee child, 152.88. And then the family, 216.60 would be the increase. And that is a, that is an increase of 7.45% for that plan.
Do you have handy how many are on each plan? I know we, we have that at the-
Yes, that's, that's one of the things when we met with board members, we did share. I have that too. That was one of the handouts that we gave you. Now, that, that changes all the time, but-
This is the most recent?
The most recent one.
Diane? Could we, I'm sorry, the charts are all-
They're sideways.
And so, is there-
Actually, Lori can put it up on the screen.
Oh, there you go.
Yep.
Right click on the page that you know-
There you go.
Rotate clockwise.
Thank you.
Rotate it back.
We're good.
Thank you.
How is Patrick going to turn my computer like this? Don't judge.
Thank you.
Sorry. We got it. It's good.
Right now, the-
Jean?
Yes?
What, the numbers that you just read off are not on the chart I'm looking at.
No, I did the calculations, the differences.
Oh, you're, you were giving us the difference in the monthly?
Yeah, I gave you the, the difference and the increase that would happen in annually with the-
Annually, but the monthly was just a premium thing, and it's a, like, for a single, it would be $83.40 for, for-
Annually.
For a year.
An increase of that.
An increase. Okay, got it.
The entire year. Right. So, there, there was a question about how many people we have on the current 250 deductible active employees. We have 545 single enrollments on that plan, 246 spouse, spouses, 574 children. The average, and these are averages, the average family enrollment is 631. That is, that is where most of our employees are. Would you, would you like to know the average for the 1500 HRA plan? I can give you a measure.
Can you say what the 600 was, the first 600? Family enrollment? You said 600.
The family enrollment was 631.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want me to go through the enrollment for the active employees who are on the 1500 HRA? I have them right here.
That would be good.
188 single, 50 spouse, 229 children, and 104 family enrollment.
104?
104.
And 120?
Pardon?
120.
129 children.
109, not 229?
And then, there's only, in the, in the 300, 600, 6,350 deductible plan, that plan was put in place because of the Affordable Care Act about six years ago, would you say? So that we would have a, a plan, a very low price plan. And we have five people, excuse me, four people in the single enrollment and one family enrollment. So, very low. Four and one. So, we're really talking about the, the largest number of people are, of the active employees are in the 250 deductible, and that's followed by the $1500 HRA plan. So, if we were to change this plan, the increase to the employee and to the district would be 7.45% for the 500, to change to the 250 of the 500, and there would be a 12.65% increase for the $1500 high deductible plan with the HRA and the Minimum Essential Plan. The Minimum Essential is the one where we only have four singles enrolled in one family. This, this would propose to save $1.5 million from the anticipated $5 million in medical plant costs that we would incur if we just passed on the total increase to the district and the employees. Any questions about this?
Questions? Okay, we can, I'm sure we might end up coming back to that, but we can go ahead and keep going.
I should, I should say before I go on, and I think there was a, we are meeting with our union groups to review this with them, and there was a suggestion to have some forums for anybody who could come, and so we have our first one scheduled for this Wednesday, and we put that in the staff scoop so that people would know. And it's for information to get feedback, answer questions for employees.
Jean, when is that on Wednesday?
It's Wednesday at 3:30.
Here?
Yes, here at the district office building.
We have another one Thursday, this Thursday at 4:00, and next Wednesday at 4:00.
And that, is that for union only?
No, it's for all employees.
For all employees?
Yeah, it was in the staff scoop. No, the Ask Me group is, is coming to the one that's on Wednesday at 3:30, but it, it was put in the staff scoop for anybody.
Is the agenda going to be the same for all three meetings?
Yeah. We'll be going, basically going through the same things we went through. We had a meeting on Friday with the GBA. We had met with David and Justin before that, and they suggested bringing more, more of their leadership members in, so we did that on Friday. It was supposed to be on Monday, but school was canceled. And so, we're going to take people through the same format. Similar, similar to the things that we, we're sharing now, actually, we, we actually will probably give them this, this memo, because this really tells, this outlines what we intend to do and provide some of the reasoning for it.
Anna?
I don't know, just, I won't, I'm sure I forget to say this, but knowing that there's a timeline that's in March, and I was, I mean, I did, I was, it was the really cold day. I did a conference call, and it was hour and a half to go through, and, I mean, let's face it, this, this actually doesn't impact me personally with my insurance. Knowing that there's a lot of information to cover and this, you know, the proper amount of time to gather feedback and really, and just to be able to absorb it all, I think I personally want to just throw it out there that I would be really comfortable, I would be more comfortable voting on this if there was as much time as possible given to staff so that they could really fully absorb, be informed, present feedback. Because another thing with the feedback, because obviously the feedback I'm interested in as a board member, speaking for myself, how do you envision with these engagement sessions, getting the feedback and then bringing it to the board so we, we have that other than someone just makes a phone call to us?
Well, I think, you know, we would, with the meeting with the GBA, you know, people listen, they ask good questions, and my suggestion was is that they would talk with David and Justin, who would then contact us with feedback from their members, but if anybody wants to call us, they certainly can do that. We would take feedback at the meeting, and then we, we could provide phone numbers for them to call or email us with their feedback. I mean, if you have other ideas of how we can do that, I would be open to it, because I, I too want to know what people are thinking.
And, and the reality is, we're actually the ones voting on it, so I would prefer the feedback personally.
To contact, to contact board members?
Right. I mean, if I'm going to have to make a decision on their, yeah, I mean, I think that, that would be, for me personally, a better direction.
Yeah. The simplest way to do that would, Dave Harzwick and Justin would communicate with you directly.
Mm-hmm. Or even anyone that wants to. I mean, I feel like that, if I'm the one voting on it, making the decision, I'd like to hear the feedback.
If, if you're comfortable, I can certainly say that, you know, you're welcome to call board members. You know, board members are, they're, all their, you know, your information is on the website.
Well, the feedback that you're getting, you'll compile that though?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll share that with us in addition, so if people do not reach out to us, you will share that with us.
Yes.
But just so they know they have an option as well, if they want to.
Yeah.
But we're looking, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, look, looking for feedback.
Absolutely.
Anything else before we continue? Okay.
Actually, Andrew?
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for us to attend any of those?
Melissa, if board members attend, do we have to post them?
Will you post them?
I mean, could they be posted in the event?
When is the first one?
Wednesday at 3:30.
You'll have to post it tomorrow. Because you're going to be voting on this eventually, so.
Right. Right. And I'm not saying that time-wise, they don't really work for me, but-
Since you're talking about posting it too, and you said it was in the staff scoop, how else are we letting teachers know?
We don't, we let, we let, the staff scoop is our communication. We don't send out separate emails to all staff for something like this. I mean, we certainly could, but I-
Okay. I just was wondering.
Well, maybe this is big enough to do that.
Yeah, I think we should do that. Can we ask principals of, can we have the principals actually send an email to their staff with the dates?
Sure, I guess, what do you think?
Well, it'd be good for them to hear it from a, from their, their, or their building administration to encourage them to come.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I don't know. I'm waving, looking, you want to follow the protocol. I'm thinking, Jean, Jean, if you could, and I know that you've reached out to the different groups, and there, I'm, I'm assuming, and I'm looking at David and Justin, I would assume that you've had communication already with your members, or would be sharing information or letting them know too, so it would be coming through the, the group leadership. It's the, it's the teachers who, and staff who may not get the memo is really what's important, because they, they may not have, have that representation. So, I'm wondering if, if something would come out from Human Resources, and I know, John, I know that you and Judy and, and we put something out through, a real specific targeted through, Beth does her weekly updates, we could get that out. We could get that out as well through, through that communication. So it goes directly to principals, to your point, to encourage staff to attend as well.
Well, there, there actually, I think two are happening this week already, so we'd have to, we'd have, I would probably have to send out something.
Well, that would, that would come from you, but that might be the easiest.
You may also want to, sorry, sorry, John.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I would encourage you as well, if they need to bring their children to that meeting as well, let them know that we can, you know, they can do that because that can't be a barrier for people, obviously, they're picking up their kids.
Sure. We, we also have our principal meeting a week from today. I, I want to make sure if we're having the principals be a conduit of information that they are up to speed with the most current information because it is fairly complex, very complex, actually. So I would want us to have a briefing for our principals at our principal meeting next Tuesday so that they can be good stewards of that information as well.
So it seems kind of obvious that we should extend the vote into March.
Michelle?
Thank you. I, I'm thinking also, John, if you do that outreach with the principals, and there are still quite a few numbers. I don't know if you have any scheduled next week, Jean, or any additional meetings?
We do, we have five, three scheduled.
Okay, because there may be a need for an additional meeting if we, you know, a couple more. I, I, I agree that we want to make sure that everybody is well apprised. And then as far as data collection, I don't know if you're going to ask for things in writing or how we would make sure we have that data, but we should probably think about how we do that as well.
Do you want the feedback?
Yeah, so that it's, you know, in, in previous places, we've collected in writing what people had to share. I'm wondering if we couldn't even just set something, some sort of documentation.
Set out a, send out a all district.
We can figure that out.
Google, Google survey?
Yeah, just to get that feedback. So the board would have it. And then, of course, they're always welcome to call the board.
Brendan?
So, voting March, I think our meeting's the thirteenth.
Your meeting is?
Is, is okay timeline for you?
Yes.
So in March, we're meeting on the sixth and thirteenth instead of the nineteenth?
Yeah, because spring break.
Spring break is the nineteenth.
You mean the fourth and the eleventh?
Fourth and the eleventh.
Oh, is it the eleventh?
Fourth and the eleventh.
Right.
I'm just randomly pulling numbers.
Fourth and the eleventh, so we would vote on the eleven?
On the eleven.
That's good.
The, then, should we move on to the next section?
Sure, I think we'll want to have some wrap-up about the concept in general at the end, but we can keep going through them, I think.
We currently, retirees are able to remain on the district's medical plan as long as they continue to pay the premiums. And when they reach Medicare eligibility, medic, they must enroll in Medicare and, but they can continue our plan in addition to Medicare. Our plan is not designed to be a supplement. Many of our employees do, when they retire, they, they take Medicare and then they purchase a supplement, but we still have people who stay on our plan. And our recommendation is that any employee who retires after July first, two thousand and twenty be ineligible for the district medical plan when they become Medicare eligible. And dependents would also become ineligible at that time. I think we've shown the board the, the documents that show the costly nature of people who are Medicare eligible and older. And so this is another way, not immediately, but over time, we'll save the district money. We've had some classes for people through a consultant with M three and she has come in and offered classes to people to show them that there's different ways to supplement Medicare through a, through a supplemental plan. But we haven't really required people to be off the plan. So this is another recommendation that we would recommend you approve, and it would be a separate motion. I, I don't know that any of our other districts have kept people on their health insurance plan once they become eligible for Medicare. This wouldn't affect anybody who's currently on our plans. So they would be eligible to remain.
Questions? I'm, I'm still uncertain, I asked this question before and I'm, I'm still not quite certain how, how this works. So what, other than, other than obviously, if you have dependents, and maybe that's the answer to the question, other than the issue of having dependents, younger, younger dependents, well, you're of Medicare age or your spouse isn't Medicare age yet, what other advantage does someone, like, do? Are you, presumably, people must at least, some people must at least believe themselves to be better off because not everybody, if it was obviously worse, hopefully people would, if, right, if they were paying more and getting less, then they would switch. So obviously, one reason to stay is if you have dependents, but is it, are there some circumstances where the individual is, is better off, or are there not really any and this is all dependent-driven, probably?
I can't answer that with a hundred percent certainty, but I think, I think it's more of a, an emotional tie to the plan that the plan that they know. Because of the cost of the plan, when you're on Medicare and you're paying a hundred percent of our premium, I, I'm not sure that there's a financial advantage. Now, I, I am, I don't know that for a fact, but I know that people who have really studied this generally take a supplement. That's what I plan to do.
Do you have the, do you have the M three, do you have the answer on that?
In the past, when we have done.
Cindy, you've come to the table. It's a city van Aston.
In the past several years, when we've done an analysis on the retiree coverage being on a Medicare supplement plan, in every scenario, the member would have been in a lesser, expensive, more robust offering. But has that changed over the years, I'm not sure. In the past, when we did it two years ago, your folks would have been in a better situation.
To take a?
Supplemental, a med sup plan or an advantage plan over the district's plan.
In, in many cases, I know from working with some relatives, when they take a supplement, that supplement is designed so that Medicare pays and then the supplement, if you have a, a good quality one, just picks up where Medicare left off. With our plan, you have to meet the deductibles again. And so, you know, you pay your, you pay through Medicare and then you go through the deductible, say the two fifty if you're single, and then you're in the ninety-ten. So that's something that, you know, when you analyze the plans, you want to look at.
Okay, but certainly if, certainly if someone is, certainly if someone is sixty-five and their spouse isn't eligible for insurance and is, is sixty-two, it's, obviously, that's where it makes an enormous difference because.
Yes, and we have the numbers of how many people, we don't have any children on the plan, people who are Medicare eligible, and I think we had forty-three, forty-three people who are spouses who are on the plan for people who are Medicare eligible.
And if, if our retiree becomes Medicare eligible and dependents are not yet, it does create a second qualifying, Cobra, Cobra qualifying event for them. So we would offer Cobra, so potentially use that to bridge as well.
Right, but, but Cobra is, is?
A hundred percent of the premium.
Yeah, which is?
Honestly, it's the same as what they're paying today.
Right.
Actually, it's a hundred and two percent, so it's a little bit higher than what they're paying today.
Because they're paying a hundred percent of the premium. Well, and the other thing with the sixty, or the forty-three people who are the spouses on the plan, we don't know if they're on the plan because they're younger. They could be also Medicare eligible and on the plan. So we don't know their age.
Okay, so we, we contribute, the, um, but the, the district, everything, the district contributes zero percent of the cost and just allows the purchase?
Correct.
Okay.
And then when a person takes Cobra, we do charge a two percent premium for Cobra coverage.
Is it, are we required to charge it, or is that just allowed so everyone does?
It's allowed.
It's the administrative, yeah, it's administrative costs.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions right, right now on that. Others? Uh, thank you.
We'll move on to dental then. Our overall dental premium is calling for a three point five eight percent increase, which would be an increased cost of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars to the district. The increase to the employee would be minimal, nineteen cents for single and fifty-five cents for family coverage. We don't have a, in dental, you just, we just have a single and family coverage. We don't have the employee plus one, as we do with medical. We've had unchanged premiums for five consecutive years. And then when we looked at the dental plan and we looked at Delta Dental's Wisconsin Book of Business, we have a, a very high-quality plan and we would like to keep the cost that we pass on to employees at a zero. And so to do this, we would implement, we recommend implementing a twenty-five dollar single deductible and a seventy-five dollar family deductible to the dental plan. This deductible doesn't apply to your routine cleanings and your X-rays, which is covered a hundred percent when you use our in-network dental provider, which is pretty extensive through Delta. It's, it's very good. So this is what we would recommend to maintain the rates unchanged and not pass along any cost of the district. The district would actually have a savings of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, uh, four, seven hundred and nine dollars if we did this. We were able, under our question and answer, able to provide an idea of how many, I can't get it to me right away. Do you want to have that?
We, we asked Delta Dental how many family members, family plans would have met that seventy-five, the full seventy-five dollar deductible in the course of last year, the seventeen, eighteen plan year, and it was actually less than five percent that would have had to pay that, the full seventy-five dollars. We're still working on getting the numbers of people on the single plan and we'll, we'll get that to you when we, when we obtain it.
And about how many people do we cover on dental? It's a, it's a lot.
There's three, where's Q and A?
The Q and A has it.
We have over eight thousand, single, eight thousand people on the plan, I want to say it's thirty-eight or thirty-nine hundred.
Thirty-eight, three thousand, eight hundred and three, does that sound about right? So it's, it's a small percentage that actually incur, that would actually incur the seventy-five dollar family deductible. And that's, and that's, if you have four children and you all have it, it's, it's still seventy-five, so per person. Any questions about the dental? The next, the next item is the dependent eligibility verification. We are recommending to contract with Impact Interactive, a company that would conduct a dependent eligibility verification for our current medical and dental plan participants. This would only be for the, the people who are not, it would not affect single people, single coverage. It would only affect those who carry spouse or children on the plan. We have thought about this for, for, over a period of time. The cost of the audit is about forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And we are thinking that, we, we put in some estimates of what the savings could be, ranging anywhere from a hundred and eighty-four, nine to a little over half a mil, half a million dollars if we would even pull three percent off of our plan who are not eligible. The company conducts this and they've done, they do this as part of their business. People would have to present birth certificates for children who are on the plan and they would also, or proof of adoption, or proof of, that they are the guardians of the children, legal guardians, and then marriage certi, marriage licenses would have to be produced. If there's somebody who doesn't have a marriage license because, you know, perhaps they left a country under duress from a foreign country, they would look at other things such as tax documents to verify marriage. You know, people who lost their licenses and, you know, don't have birth certificates would have to obtain them. So there would be some work on the part of the employee. But we think this is a responsible thing to do to make sure that the people who are on the plan are people who are supposed to be on the plan. Any questions about it?
Michelle?
Jean, can you speak to the kinds of things that you put out to staff to make sure that they understand who should be on the plan and who should not? Where would they find that, how do they know? Can you make mistakes when you sign up? I mean, I think that we have, we have people, you know, concerned about that, including, we've talked through this many times.
We have. When, in the last several years, when a person puts a person on a plan for the first time, they might be a new employee, or they might add somebody during our open enrollment. We require marriage licenses and birth certificates to show adoption paperwork or to show that the person is qualified to be on the plan. But after that, things can change and so, for example, a person could get divorced and we don't have our employees respond that they got divorced when they change their names, if they choose to do so. They don't have to tell us why they're changing their name. So we might have spouses on the plan who are no longer married, legally married to a person. We might have people putting a child on and, and, or that had been on and is still there. So even though you check at this point in time, there could be people historically who've been on or have been added that aren't qualified to be on. The, the estimates actually are higher. The company actually would give us a higher estimate than this, that we, they think, come off the plan. So we use, use a more conservative estimate. If we do this with open enrollment, however, we're not going to be able to give you a precise number who came off the plan because in open enrollment, if somebody is taken off the plan, we're not going to ask any questions. So if we rolled this out and say, you know, update your open enrollment, people, family members, if somebody is pulled off the plan, we're not going to ask why. Likewise, there'll be this amnesty period, so if they come off the plan, we don't know if perhaps they went on to a, a spouse's plan, we, or if they weren't supposed to be on to begin with. So we won't be able to give you precise numbers, but we'll know how, who's come off the plan and we might estimate that some might just come off because they've chosen to take them off. If, if a person has come off the plan and we find through Impact Interactive that they weren't supposed to be on the plan and Impact Interactive tells us this person was not eligible and they had claims, we are not going to go back and recoup the claims. We could do that, but we've made the recommendation that we would not do that.
Christina?
Is that forty-five day time period, Jean, where they submit documentation, is, is that set in stone or is that what the, this company recommends, or if that's the timeline that they work through?
I think, Jennifer, is that, that's what they recommend?
That's what they, what they recommend, that's what they have found successful with their other, other customers. So what we would do is use the, as Jean mentioned, the open enrollment would be the amnesty period where people could remove. Once that ends, then they'd have that forty-five day period where they work with Impact Interactive to supply the documentation. Once that period is over, is when we would know if there was anybody that we would need to remove.
Do you have any idea why that forty-five day period, like, if we wanted to extend it to, for longer? Is there a reason why the forty-five days?
We, we could ask, I would, personally, my thought is that forty-five days, that would bring us just about to July first is when our, our plan year begins. So we would have a clean start on that plan year and not have to worry about premium adjustments or, or anything if, if we find out at a later date that something would need to be done. And Cindy and Mandy, I don't know if you can respond, but they, they have found that that's plenty of time. Again, they, they work with the people to, to get the documentation and to help them with, with where, what they can provide and where to go to get that.
So if somebody couldn't meet that, if there was additional legal documentation that they had to save money for, and, and you would, would you be able to work with them past that July first deadline to keep them on?
Yes, on an individual basis, we, as the district, we have that ability, yes.
Okay, could, could we provide that in writing to people so that we show a doc, like, a commitment to that, to, to folks? And also to what you just said as well, Jean, that we, we are not going to retroactively ask for that. I think that would be powerful.
I think that we would work with Impact Interactive to create the communication to the employees. Why are we doing this? If you take the person off the plan, what will happen? I've been through this before and. I've been through this before and when people come off the plan, you have to be very careful about not making judgments and making people feel that they've done something wrong. It's just, and that's one of the benefits of having another company. So we're separated from that, so, you know, we're not, we're not trying to judge. We just, we're just trying to make sure that the people who are on the plan qual, are qualified to be on the plan.
So I have one other question. So in terms of, you know, creating a culture and climate, obviously we want to be financially responsible. But at the same time, we also want to recognize that we do have folks in our community who are undocumented and may not have the documentation needed. So how do we balance that, right? How do we, how do we move forward responsibly and not create a culture where it's, you know, dividing between people who have the documentation and who don't?
Well, all of our employees are documented because we have, that's, that's a law.
Right, but their family may.
But their family may not be. And so that's where we would look at tax records. But they might, they might still have a birth certificate for that person to establish the fact that they are, their child. If, if they, the marriage license are, is the part that they may not have because they might have been married in a country where they had to flee and they didn't take those things with them and of course they can't get them. And that sometimes happens with education.
So what would be the plan there, Jean? So if they come here as a refugee?
We would look at tax records if they're working.
How far back would you have to go for tax records to verify that? Because what, right?
I'll ask the company, you know, if it's a.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get more information about that because they did, the company did tell us when we had, we had just had a brief call with the company just to say how, how would this work? And we didn't get into what the alternate forms of documentation would be.
They, they did assure us that they've worked with many companies and they work with companies that, that are near borders and, and have different situations. So they, they've seen a lot of this and are able to work with people through it. And again, ultimately, as the district, we still have that one-on-one. We can override, you know, if we need to, we, we can make the exceptions that, that we need to make.
Yeah, I, I. I think as much as like verification that we can have, that what they say they're going to do is actually what they're going to do would make everyone feel more comfortable.
Well, we would be signing a contract with the company to outline what they're going to do and that would be reviewed by Melissa Thiel-Coller. So that if the board would approve this, first thing we're going to do is get that contract and work that through so everything is worded the way we want it to be. You know, our goal is, is not to put, I mean, it, it is going to annoy people, you know, think, oh no, I have to go find these things. But the last thing we want to do is to make somebody who is truly married or has children who can't provide the documentation because of a certain circumstance in their life, some trauma, make them feel that they aren't being truthful with us.
Sorry, I have one additional question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
During this period of time, Jean, I anticipate that we'll take up more of your staff time as people are working through this. Are you planning ahead in your staff to bucket additional time to provide that additional support to them? Or how will that work?
The support is actually provided through Impact.
Through the Impact, so, okay. But, but you're saying too, you would also be providing support as well, so.
Well, we would be, Impact would be calling us and meeting with us, I think, over the phone, going through the different situations that we would have to either, you know, weigh in on and determine how we would, you know, handle them. They would take their cues from us. So if we, if we want an exception made, we would be the ones to determine that. They would provide some input and insight, I'm sure, but our, the decision is ours.
Okay.
During our open enrollment period, it is a very busy time in human resources.
Yeah, it's already busy, so.
It's, yes, it, but, but it's an important time because this is important to our employees.
Rhonda?
So all of these things that you're asking us, we're having motions to vote on. Those will all be shared with staff?
Yes, yes.
Union and non-union?
Yes, those who come to the, the meeting. I, well, this, this document is out on the, on the drive, so I mean, I don't have any problem copying it and handing it out and taking people through this, just as we're doing today.
Questions? Yeah, I have, I have a couple. So to me, I, I am very afraid of the morale impact this is going to have coming at the same time that we're going to be asking people to pay more for healthcare. Though I think it is possible that if we are providing a good annual increase that we won't see fam, at least won't see families go backwards in, at least on an average basis. But we're going to be asking them to pay a little more and then we're going to be using a, a third, you're, you are suggesting that we use a, a third-party firm on a pretty short timeline. And the, the stress that this would cause a, a family with difficulty getting documents and at one time, at one time finding these documents was a, a part of a previous job of, of mine. Okay, and it's not, I mean, if you were, if you were born, if, if you were born in Somalia, the chances of, the chances of an accurate birth certificate being, being available, even, even if you were born outside of wartime, is, is, was virtually no. Now, there were alternate methods that were available, so that, that was okay. In, in the circumstances I, I had, we had other things to, to look at. If, you know, getting one, you know, just, just trying to get something from a, a large, a large US city with the amount of red tape is, is a big deal. Fees to get these things is, is a big deal. What I'm concerned about is this, you know, whether it's this or whichever company, they might, I, I'm sure they talk about doing a fair process, but the way, the way they make money is getting people off of plans. That's, that's what they do. And I guess what I would like to, I, I think because there would be a, we would be working towards a contract negotiation and because I, I, I think, as I was thinking about this, I also don't want to say specific things in open session that could undermine the process of, of auditing, right? At the same time, I think those have to happen and I think that could be under closed session for contracts. If we're going to be asking, if we, if we want to say, we think that you should accept these alternatives, but I, I think it's appropriate not to say in open session what the alternatives might be. I am much, I am much less attached to the importance of having the change effective pre-July 1 than I am to the idea of getting it right. And my thought right now is what could we do? What could we do on our own with verification and giving people an opportunity to remove people off the plan freely without, without this firm being involved? And then maybe later, maybe later you add the layer of, of the firm, but now people have had, you know, two opportunities. It's, I just don't, I'm, I'm very concerned about, I, I think the impact of what this is, would do to morale is being underestimated because you will have people who's, who've worked here for 20 years, their kids are 17, 15, and 13. There is no doubt that it's their kids, but all of a sudden, all of a sudden we have to get these records. And again, I think there are, there are alternative records that are certain enough that the state of Wisconsin accepts them as a Plan B that this company probably doesn't unless we told them to. And I think that's a contract negotiation question, so I'd like that to be probably closed, closed session on the 18th. And then if, if we're able to do that, then I won't, like I said, I don't want to talk about this piece, this piece, this piece, but I would rather, I would rather wait a little bit before bringing these in. Because I know too, you can, when I did mine, it was, I, I was, I took it very carefully because the stakes were quite high if I messed up and I'm sure most people do. But I could have just said same, 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 same in eight seconds. So maybe if we did a step like saying, to make sure our record keeping is accurate and to make sure that inadvertently people weren't on the plans, please, you know, proactive, maybe they have to proactively enter child's name and social, child's name and social, spouse's name. They have to type it in, they can't say yes, yes, yes.
Pardon?
That's been in place since.
Yeah.
You can't just say, we don't have an option, just check, keep the same. You have to type them longhand each year.
Not each year, but, but you have to verify.
There's a difference, there's a difference.
In 2014, we went up with an online enrollment, so ever since then, they entered their dependence at that point. And ever since then, if there's any changes, they've been indicating yes.
Right, but the whole point, one of the biggest points is you're presumably is that you're spouse, I mean, our system would probably detect if the kid was older, if they just kept clicking their kid, who's now 27, 28.
Umar catches the people who are over, or six.
At 26, that's an automatic process.
I'm not worried about those.
Right, so it's spouses and so I think it's, I, I think there is, I think there is something to be said though for, there is a difference between checking a box and maybe having to do something a little bit more proactive of a, of a verification possibly. But I, I think I'd probably rather save most of the rest of my questions for a closed session about the negotiation of this contract. Rhonda?
Okay, so to your point, is there, and it might be really obvious, it's just not, it's not coming to me. Is there a reason why we, we are having someone do an audit, right? We're having someone, because I think there is something around that whole thing is that you have, it's almost like we can't do it. So, can we do it? Why can't we do it? And is it, would it come, would it come across better if it's not just a random company that has no personal connection to us doing it?
We, we could, we could do it. If you, if you do it with open enrollment, at every open enrollment, that's the time for any employee to say, these people belong on my plan or not. That's when you take them off, no questions asked. You put them on, if you put them on, we ask for the verification. If you take somebody off, no questions asked. And people do that, you know, they might decide to put a child on a, on a spouse's plan because they perceive it better. So that, so open enrollment is a time when they can do that. And if we do this with open enrollment, that's their time to, no questions asked, just take the person off the plan, okay? Just take them off. If we do it outside of open enrollment, then we know that they're coming off the plan because of this audit, most likely. So open enrollment gives people a little bit of amnesty, confidentiality about it. We, we could do it, but I would prefer that HR not know necessarily the reason why people are coming off the plan. I mean, if, if it comes to a problem where they can't get the documents, we might, will know that this person will be off the plan by that deadline. There will be, have to be a deadline.
Why, why would you not want to know? Would it be worth $41,000?
I mean, I want them off the plan, but I don't necessarily need to know the details of what happened behind the scenes to that employee. You know, from, I'd, I'd rather to me, I'd rather maintain as much anonymity for that employee as possible by having the third party do it, so that if, if the third party says, take this person off the plan, that's what we do.
That's the concept of an amnesty.
No, no questions asked, no questions asked. And it's, it, it needs to be confidential. I don't want, it's, I want this to be a confidential thing as much as possible.
So you think they would have an easier time accepting a perfect stranger asking them for that information?
They would do the reminders. It wouldn't be human resources as, you know, I, I wouldn't need to know, you know, how many times we had to remind somebody. And I, it would be, I think, more confidential for the employee to have a third party do it, if, if we do do this.
Ed?
Looking at these numbers, and I, and I've done some, some reading on this, and I see that, you know, it's fairly common with industry and in a lot of public agencies. But do you have an idea as far as return on investment with public school districts? Does that come across your, your desk at all?
Not specifically to public school districts, but I do know that some public entities. Cindy, do you know if, if there's any specifics to public school districts?
I don't know the average specific to public entity, but I can tell you, we did do one for Brown County and the city of Green Bay. And for the city of Green Bay, it was approximately 4.5%.
Really, okay. The other thing is, just as, as a suggestion here, if, if this, whenever this comes forward for a vote, if it's on the 18th or if it's later in March, this particular element, I think, really needs to be broadcast quickly, broadly, and loudly so that folks know it's coming.
And that's why I think, you know, if, if this would be something that the board is able to vote on and we could start working on it, get the contract, you know, to Melissa to review, make sure it has all the wording that we want it to have, start working with the company and start communicating right away. But we will, I, I really, we really do want to do it with open enrollment so people can just, you know, take the person off the plan, no questions asked. I think that's, that I think we've talked about is pretty important to us.
Christina?
This might be odd, but I would love, do you have any, like Laura, Katie? Do you guys have any thoughts on this? Because this is a big decision and I'm just wondering if you are feeling any sort of way about it.
My preference would be to, I, I get what you're saying, Jean, about letting people remain distant from HR and just go through the process independently with the, the independent auditor. I think the amnesty period is critical because people can just self-select out. I think there's perhaps just some honest misinformation out there, misunderstanding out there as to who's eligible and who's not. And there may find, we may find that there are people who are eligible who aren't on the plan and they'll be joining the plan.
Thank you. Anybody else? I was just curious what y'all also were thinking if we are missing something from the discussion.
I get the person piece. I think it, it has to be handled with dignity, but I also get the, the fiscal piece. That, you know, we're stewards of the taxpayers' money and you then make sure none is spent.
Certainly, yeah.
I think, Jean, it's important to, to make sure that we'll be communicating this to staff, whether it's in meetings or in memos, to make sure that it's clear that if you're having difficulty providing your documentation, please contact, you know, whoever they, whether it's the firm or, or you or something like that. I mean, just to make it clear upfront that, that, you know, we'll work with you if, if this has become a hardship and you're having trouble.
Just one more thing. I, I can see that, you know, it's going to be controversial, but just in terms of stewardship of public dollars, I, I guess it's, you know, it is a responsible thing to do. And I appreciate that it's going to be handled with sensitivity and the amnesty period in there. And hopefully, we won't have any surprises.
If, is, just as we talk about this at the board table, one of the things that, that I've heard from Andrew and I'm assuming the rest of the board would want this, is that we would have a closed session around the contract itself, so that we could make sure that we have all of the concerns addressed in that contract.
And I'd like to have, and we're, oh, Jean, if it's possible that we can, they could send us.
It's a good point.
I don't know if it's possible they could send us a draft now, letting them know we don't have the authority, we're not entering, but we would like to review the contract so that if there are terms there that are absolutely non-negotiables for them, that we're not agreeable to, we'll know now that this is not an option we can pursue. So if you could reach out to the company and get a draft and then we could have a conversation.
And what about if we looked at other companies too and narrowed it down to this one? I mean, are we, was, was there, would we not, why would we not do an RFP or something? I understand you don't have to, okay, that's, yeah.
We did actually take it out to RFP and we had three bids and, and Impact was the recommended bid. They were priced competitive and they also have a collaborative working relationship with Umar, which allows them to get the dependent. We did actually take it out to RFP, and we had three bids, and, and impact was the recommended bid. They were priced competitive, and they also have a collaborative working relationship with Umar, which allows them to get the dependent data through electronic transfer.
So does that mean that they can, in some cases, avoid the need for someone to submit a birth certificate? Or does everyone submit a birth certificate in the end?
Everyone ultimately submits the birth certificates, but it allowed them to get the dependent data of who is on the plan as dependent and their information to directly contact them.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm not as worried about it, since I know that if, if you did an RFP on our behalf, then that's, that's fine. But, yeah, I, I just, yeah, this, this, do I, I, I mean, I, my, I guess my position right now is that someday there will be an audit with a, with a third-party firm. It's, it's more a question of timing and knowing exactly what that third party is going to do, but that's appropriate for a closed, closed session rather than asking about a laundry list of alternative documents in a public open session. Because that's, yeah. Ronda?
So we're not voting on anything contract-wise. Nothing happens until this engagement is with staff, right?
Right.
Okay. And I, I understand, I hear the, we're stewards of, of tax dollars, but it seems like over and over again, that seems to always fall on teachers, right? And I don't know why that is. Whenever we need to dig for something, they come up short a lot, often. I understand the insurance market. I know it's not a pretty picture out there in general, but at the end of the day, I really hope we start looking at our priorities about how to honor taxpayers, but as well as how to honor our staff and our schools. Because I think you're right on about the morale piece of it. This is another really fun vote to take. I'm really, I'm really happy that we're going to give a lot of time to have engagement on this. But it does seem like often, you know, we need to make sure we're doing what we can to attract and retain the best teachers we can, and that they feel valued and honored. And so however we can make this, you know, the, whatever we can do with this to, to really help ease this pain, because it is, I mean, I think we need to be looking at that.
I don't disagree. I think it's, but it's, it's a way to make sure that we keep the cost of the insurance plan as, as low as possible so that we can keep a good insurance plan. And when, when somebody's on the plan who shouldn't be, it is ultimately costing that teacher more money. I mean, you know, it does.
No, I think I'm, I'm just going to even go for the entire conversation. You know, all of the things we're, we're asking to, we're asking for consideration to vote on in general, it's, you know, and I'm, and I'm hoping that this isn't going to continue. That because in life, and I think I shared this with you on the conference call, when you take from people, they assume they're getting something for that, right? They're having some sort of a, it's a buffer. I'm going to give you more, but somehow I'm going to get something for that. And I'm not sure what that looks like, and if we could even offer some incentive so it's not as much of a blow to them, and it doesn't feel like, you know, we've got a four to six million dollar shortfall, so, you know, you'll make up for that. We'll figure it out. It's on you. I mean, that's what I worry about. I worry a lot about that. And so I'm, I'm hoping somehow we could maybe in the next, you know, first of all, I'm hoping that we don't vote on this, this month or coming up soon, that we actually extend it as much as we can, and that we maybe find some way to cushion this.
Michelle?
I, I think you're raising a very good point. We talked about it earlier today. It's, what's challenging is that this is a separate piece of a bigger picture. You know, we're looking at a consumer price index this year of two point four-four percent, which certainly, if the district and the board would support that, would certainly cover this. On the flip side, am I right? Is that accurate to state that? If that were part of that piece, I'm looking at our financial person.
Did you restate that?
So if, if an employee received an increase aligned to the consumer price index, it would be more money than the insurance piece. They would have more in pocket.
Slightly higher. I think you could generalize and say that five million overall for two point four-four cell increases plus steps, and what you're talking about today is five million dollars in insurance.
Right. So I think that that's, that's the challenge right now. There's a big picture out there that we're looking at, where those opportunities are to reduce, where the opportunities are to not take away from, from staff and increase class sizes and not, you know, eliminate any positions. At the same time, looking at how do we balance that and what kind of cost savings we could get if we looked at different areas where we didn't give the CPI. We talked about that as administrators. So looking at where we can get some cost savings, you know, the, the circumstances continue to be is that while our enrollment has decreased overall because the children simply aren't there in our, in, in Green Bay Public Schools attendance area, I'm not talking about open enrollment. I'm talking about physical bodies of children coming into schools like they have in the past. While that has decreased, the, the staffing has increased. So our numbers have decreased in terms of actual students, but our, our staffing has increased. So trying to balance that particular piece based on student need has been a priority. So it's, it's a big picture. And unfortunately, this is sitting out by itself. So it looks like, you know, to your point, and, and we talked about this, to your point, Rhonda, that, that if I'm a teacher and all I see is this, it's going to be very difficult for me to say, this is on me and there's nothing else for me. And so it's, I wish we had all the pieces on the table so people could see the whole picture.
Can I add something to that? It's also an issue of equity, because the people who are going to be impacted the most are going to be our paras and our, and our employees who make less money. They're going to be asked to pick up the significant burden to cover this.
Yes.
And that needs to be part of the conversation as well.
And it has, and it has been. And I think that's the piece.
But I mean, as what the community as well is saying.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
What can we do? How can we work through this? Because asking someone who makes thirty thousand dollars a year to all of a sudden, seventy-five dollars for a family might not be that big of a deal, to someone who makes a hundred and fifty, but if you make thirty thousand, that is a significant burden. That's one less grocery shop, right? Whereas someone who, and, and it's not to pit people against each other, but to see it as an equity issue.
That's why I think there are, there are things that I think can be discussed in the, the closed session. I might be able to, I have a very, very good chance of alleviating that. But, you know, I don't know if this company is going to push back because I, I would imagine, I mean, I know how, you know, businesses like to have a, businesses like to have their boilerplate contract just signed and do their regular business their, their regular way. And if they want this, you know, if a company wants to do this large business with us, we might want to do things a little bit more employee-sensitive or a little bit different, or, you know, trade it, trade a couple of things off. And that's, that's just how it's, it's going to need to, need to go. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not opposed to ever having an audit, but I think there's, I, I certainly, I certainly think to just take the company's standard approach on the stated timeline would be a morale disaster. I think we could mitigate most of that with some, some changes. So I look forward to talking about it in two weeks. Rhonda?
Are you saying that the incentive would actually have to come from that company? Why couldn't it just come from the district?
I'm not saying that. I wasn't saying that.
But I mean, are you saying, are you saying that that would, is that what you're concerned about? That maybe?
I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about a lot of things, some of which would, some of which are not appropriate for public consumption, and because it would affect a contract negotiation. Okay. Brenda?
I'm getting back to the logistics. All of your staff meetings will be done before, in, in the next two weeks?
In the next two weeks.
And the last one is?
Uh, next week, I think it is. Wednesday, next week's Wednesday. But we could, we could add a couple more if.
Well, no, actually, I'm, I'm more concerned that we, I'm wondering if we should have that, this topic back again on our board meet, our agenda for two weeks from now, with a chance to, to talk about the feedback, talk about any, you know, rethinking you're doing, kind of a thing.
Like a discussion.
Like a discussion item, right.
On the superintendent's agenda?
Probably discuss them on public comment, I think.
Discussion, public comment?
But, but, but I don't want to, us to end up on March thirteenth having way too many questions and not being able to vote. So I think the sooner we have conversation, you know, hear, hear the, have a chance to hear the feedback, have another conversation is, is.
Right.
Lessens the fact, you know, the possibility that, that we aren't ready to vote on March thirteenth.
And, and after we go through the rest of this, I, I'd like to make sure that I'm clear on, do you want motions brought forward in February at all? Or should we just hold on every motion until the March meeting? Because I don't want to put a motion in front of you when you're not ready, you know?
So speak to that end. If it doesn't appear that we have enough information by March thirteenth, is the end of March your final deadline, or does it have to be that early in March?
It wouldn't have to be that early in March.
Because our March meeting is early because of spring break.
It is early because of school, yes.
I mean, conceivably, we could schedule a special board meeting to vote on these.
You could schedule a special board meeting, right.
But if we, if we have conversation in two weeks, another conversation in March, whatever day it is, I had it wrong last time.
Fourth, second, fourth?
Fourth. If we have another discussion item on March fourth, I would hope by March thirteenth, we would have had enough time to have enough information to, to take a vote. But if we don't.
If we don't, we would still have the option of.
We can reschedule a special board meeting.
Rhonda?
So are we saying that we're going to ask for feedback to be gathered within two weeks? I think we should give it a lot longer than that before we have another discussion. I do. I really think we should, especially if, if you're thinking we're going to be offering this only, and how many staff scoops are going to go out between then and now, or now and then? I think as much of a time period of gathering feedback, I think we should do that. It's a lot of information. People may not be able to make those two or three or four meetings. Because I, when we have that conversation at this table, I want personally to have that conversation with as much feedback as we can. I think that's, that should be the goal. So that we are really taking, because we're going to have a conversation, we have to, I think we have to have a, with as much information as we can.
What, what information? I mean, would we ask the question, you know, what, what is, what is your opinion about this? Do you feel it's reasonable? I mean, if, if you ask me, you know, do you want an increase in your benefits? I'm going to tell you, no.
Well, I think this is what, this is what I, this is what I would say. Based on other things that have come in, gone, it's already done. When I hear criticism of that, what it usually is, it's that, well, I had, you know, I had a half hour on Tuesday, and that's what I could, that's what I had in order to even gather the information that I needed to, you know, ask questions with, or even just absorb, because it's so much information to absorb. So whenever I hear criticism of that process of asking for feedback, is that there wasn't enough time to, to make it happen, or, you know, something happened with their personal schedule and they couldn't, so that I think, I think if we're going to do this right, we need to give as much opportunity as we can to get feedback.
Get feedback.
I guess that's, it's not even necessarily as much as what questions are we asking? Because I think the, the material speaks for itself, right? It's just about what we're going to ask, how much time we're going to give to ask that information before we have a conversation. So I would disagree with you, Brenda. I don't think we should have a conversation in two weeks. I think we should actually extend the time for feedback and then bring it back sometime in February, like later.
We don't have a meeting.
Well, whatever we need to do to make that happen.
But if we have, I mean, I, I guess I just assumed, although I'm glad it was mentioned, because you're right, it wouldn't necessarily be the case. I just assumed it would be on today, and then on again in February, and then March, and then March again. But I think having it on, having it on each agenda, that maximizes your public forum opportunities.
Do, do you really think we're, I mean, do you think we're going to get teachers to come and stand at that podium and tell us that they're uncomfortable with this?
Yes.
Mr. Page says yes.
Yeah.
Well, and if they don't.
Maybe they will.
We have in the past. I mean, that's, that's the hard transparency and opportunity.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'd, I'd feel better giving, you know, for, because, because, right, because if you, if you have meetings and then you, you don't, if you have these side meetings, I'd be concerned that people would, you know, think, why bother, why bother coming to speak on March eleventh? Because the, because it's a done, it's a done deal, where that you might feel you have a chance, you may feel you have more of a chance to shape things if you're.
And that's, and I, that's fine. I just think if they can't come to a board meeting, if they don't want to stand at the podium and speak in front of everyone, if they don't feel comfortable, are we going to give them more opportunities for, you know, engagement at, at school? Or here, aside from an open meeting? Is it just the, the few meetings in the two weeks? Or is it going to be?
Well, I'm trying to think if there's a way, you know, people, the way, the way you gather feedback to, is, is more than one way, right? So some people can't come to a meeting. They don't want to come to a meeting. They prefer to write out something. They, some people prefer to send an email. Some would like to pick up the phone and just talk to somebody and get a question answered. So, you know, my thought is, offer multiple ways for people to get back to you. Offer them to call the board. They could email you. They could call you. Same thing with us. So it could be calls, emails, coming to a meeting, getting feedback through your union representatives is another way, you know, because you might want to do that. So maybe we, maybe we, as leadership team, think about what those ways would be. So we maximize not one size fits all.
Could we do the meetings around the district in some different quads of the district?
Good.
I, I think that is important. I, I think people are intimidated to come to this building. I think it's a lot for folks. I think it would be easier for, on people, time and transportation and children. I also think we can get creative about how we meet people. I mean, we could do a Facebook Live. Hey, on Thursday night, Jean's going to get on. John, you're like, please, not me, whatever. But like, we're going to get on and we're going to talk about this.
I do.
And say, submit your questions. Because it's cold. People don't want to leave their home. I mean, let's get real. Like, let's figure out a way to make this so that we can meet them where they are. And I think there are some creative ways we could do it.
Yeah, multiple options. Nothing, nothing wrong with, nothing wrong with also having some large meetings here too, or hopefully large. But yeah, but there's Facebook, and yeah, there's a lot of.
And it's not necessarily, it's, it's really, are they going to know this is happening?
Right, yeah, I guess.
That's really the, my biggest concern, because you get busy. You have a lot going on anyway, because of the nature of your position, your families, whatever's going on. It's, are they going to know it in the first place to even give the feedback? Are they going to be aware that this is actually happening? We're discussing it, considering it, and all of that? Which is why I do like the idea of principals being able to distribute that, I guess, call to action, or just call out there that this is happening and, and we want to have some feedback, because it's closer to them.
Michelle?
I, we can come up with some creative ways. I know that Diane does all these different podcasts and things out there for people to respond to, and I, we have some ways to do that. I use Google Hangouts. We've tried a variety of things. I do think, you know, the more we can get it out there. And I appreciate, Andrew, the, and Brenda, the piece that we could just keep bringing it back. Because what it affords us, the ability to do as a staff then, is to be more responsive to what you want. Otherwise, wait till the end, and then we can't respond as much. And, and we may need to do some tweaking and fixing and backing off of, or coming forward with, you know, so that, that's what it affords us more information, to be able to be more responsive and supportive of what the board is, is thinking.
I think it's long to really, really clear about when we're. I think as long as we're really, really clear about when we're actually voting, when the decision's being made. That it's not, come discuss it, because the process, they may not, a lot of people won't know that, unless it's stated.
The earliest would be March eleventh then. That would be the earliest. So then, we wouldn't bring any recommendations on, at the February board meeting. It would just be discussion under the superintendent's report. We could bring back any feedback we're currently hearing. You could discuss any feedback that you've heard, because, um, three forms would have happened already. And if any board members do wish to come to the forums, just let us know and we will get those posted so that, that they're.
I think we're gonna post them.
Oh, you're gonna post them all? Okay.
I think I'll just keep the option up and if you could just send us the dates.
Yeah, could you send us the dates?
Yes, I'll, I'll send them all out.
Thanks, Jean.
Michelle?
I don't know, Sandy, did you, should we recap all this? There's a lot and I wanna make sure we have what we need and the direction from the board.
We have a couple more, we have one more element in the presentation, right?
Pardon?
Do we have any, can we get to the last element of the presentation, I think we have long term?
Yes, we do. We have the long-term disability and then just something on the F S, FSA and HRA, so that one.
Go ahead.
Okay. So long-term disability, um, we are with a company called The Standard for our Long-Term Disability, or I'll repeat by calling it LTD. The plan renewal this year is calling for a twenty-four point fifty, twenty-four point five-three percent increase, which is, which is substantial. We got requested through M three quotes for other LTD carriers or, and no other administrators are able to provide the same level of options that we have in our current plan. What we're recommending is to change the LTD benefit so that the recipient would be taxed on the premium. They would actually see that in their taxable income. And then the premium would be backed out, cause our employees don't pay a premium on LTD. We provide that to our teachers, paras, administrators, the ASME group, and others do not get it. And then when they take the, if they, if they take the benefit, they would, instead of getting a ninety percent taxable benefit, they would get a sixty-six and two-thirds tax-free benefit. Now, we've looked in, in the last, is it year? We've had fourteen people on LTD.
Since two thousand thirteen, we've averaged about fourteen people a year.
On LTD. Now, some of them go on LTD and they're permanently on LTD, some go in, need it temporarily, and then they come back to work. So, um, so it's, it's, when you pay the taxable benefit, that does increase your tax burden, depending on the tax bracket you're in. So when you're taxed on the premium, um, there's a taxable, um, you pay that. And then when you, if you get the benefit, and most employees, you know, fourteen on average in a year with the number of employees we have, isn't a lot. You would, instead of ninety percent taxable benefit, it's sixty-six and two-thirds tax-free. And this would save us, um, an estimated savings of a hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars. This one would need, um, some good explanation with employees, because they would see that tax, they'd, they'd be paying taxes on something right now that they aren't taxed on. So there's a cost that you're spreading around to all employees, so that the fourteen or so who get the benefit, um, they're the ones that would, you know, get the benefit. So many, most of our employees will never tap into LTD. There, there are other options that we looked at, which I think I talked with board members about. We have an unlimited, um, mental health benefit. Most companies have a twenty-four month, twenty-four month, um, limit. We've kept that unlimited. We could reduce costs by limiting that to twenty-four months. Um, we could also chain, keep the plan the same and just reduce the benefit. Um, we could get quotes on that. We could go down to eighty percent. And ninety percent is a, is a fairly high benefit. Um, so there are other options we could do if we didn't want to go to this taxing the premium, um, method.
Rhonda?
I think that's one of the worst things we could do.
Is to tax the premium?
Wait, to tax the premium or to reduce the benefit?
To tax, to tax the premium.
You, would you prefer us to, um, look at a, um, not, you know, the way we do it now? And perhaps change, um, the amount or look at the twenty-four month limit on mental health?
Well, I mean, when I think about, and I'm, because it was such a long phone call and I did take notes, but I'm just trying to remember. Twenty-four month benefit. You know, is there a way to figure out staffs using it in this way versus this way? If this was done, it wouldn't really impact a lot of people. I mean, the tax, the premium, just, I think, would make everyone very unhappy. Not to, again, pit people against each other, but, um, we're already asking them to pay more, right? And now we're gonna tax the premium and everything else is along with that. But I think that maybe the use of that benefit, you know, and the other options that you're sharing. I think as much information as we could get about alternative options would be really good.
Okay. I, I, I will look at alternative options.
But also too, and we're, and it, but I, I guess I also wanna know what the actual, um, what the, um, actual difference is to the, the employee. Cause one, one thing about, one thing about taxing the, one thing about taxing the, the premium is, it is a, because of marginal tax rates, it has the least or potentially zero impact on a, on a para supporting a family by themselves. And, uh, higher, a higher impact on the someone making a hundred fifty thousand. So there's, that's one thing there. And I'm concerned about, um, I mean, I've al, I've always felt that, um, mental health parity is, is an important value that, I, I mean, I think in the, yeah, I'll just, I'll just stop there.
No, don't stop.
Well, I have, I have to, okay, well, I'll just say, I'll say if, if there is, I, okay. I think there may be a perception that people who would have a mental health, uh, long-term disability that goes on for a long time, that it's somehow less valid than a physical or that someone is not, if someone is dragging it out. Where in, in fact, I think, first, well, first of all, I think the overwhelming majority of people on a long-term disability, um, are doing what they need to do, submitting their medical documentation, everything. I, I also think that there's not one type that is more prone to the rare cases of abuse than the other. I mean, people can, if, right, I, I think there's a stigma that maybe the people who are on a longer-term mental health-related disability are quote-unquote milking it. And on the physical are not, but people, certainly people have gotten in trouble for being, uh, in rare cases, being dishonest with, with both kinds. It's not like there's.
But you're, you're right, Andrew, though. Our caregiver does ask for, um, substantiation of an ongoing disability. And if they don't have it, if the doctor can't substantiate it, they are, um, they are off the plan. But in most cases, um, they do substantiate it, or the person needs it for a period of time just to get over something. And I would say that the people who I've worked with, um, there have been a lot that I've got personally involved with, but few, they are, they need it. They're not, um, they, they prefer to work, let's just say. They don't, they don't wanna be sick. They prefer to come back to work and they can't. And that's, whether it's a mental health issue or whether it's a cancer or some other serious health problem, they don't wanna go off on LTD.
And for me, the, for me, probably, probably stopping, having a different benefit for different types of conditions is probably the last thing I would wanna do. I would, I would, I would probably look at an overall lower percent if, if I had to. But I don't, I don't know that we, I don't know that we have to, if we do some more number crunching, which is the advantage of more time on, on this too.
The, the, um, the current renewal, if we keep things the same, uh, would be an eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar plus increase. So it's quite substantial. It's eking up towards a million more. So I, I would think that, like, from what I'm hearing, I'd like to get, um, some additional quotes on what a seventy-five, or excuse me, eighty, maybe eighty-five unlimited, um, mental health would be with a taxable, um, benefit and no tax to the premium. Cause I think, I, I do hear what you're saying. It's sort of like.
Well, I feel like it's like, we're just like, right? That feels agree now.
But I think, I, I, I think if you look at, I think there's, I, I, I think, I think two, two weeks to look, you know, a couple of weeks to look things over will be really informative.
We'll, we'll look at some other, other options in this, in this one. I, I hear what you're saying and I, I, I'll look to see what else we could come back with that would take some dollars, but, um, keep a decent, um, benefit.
Michelle?
So now I have the list. Is, is it okay to, the things that we're gonna follow up with? We need to ensure that all staff are aware of the changes, so we need to make sure we're going to do that. It was recommended that we notify our principals. We'll do that and their staff and make sure that they are all aware that this is an opportunity. I would assume there's a handout that they could share out.
Well, it would be the, this, this update. This is, this is it. This is basically.
Any Q and A, we'll talk about that. We need to provide multiple options for an opportunity for everyone to learn and get their questions answered. Obviously, you've been working and will continue to work with leadership from the various groups, um, so that they're well-informed and can bring forward feedback if, if their members don't find themselves wanting to do that. But that recognizing that we wanna communicate well, that the board wants to hear from everyone that's interested, whether it be attending one of the meetings and speaking or providing in writing or whatever their preference would be. We are, we heard the concern regarding taxing the premium, and so you're gonna look more deeply into that and see what you can come up with eighty, eighty-five and what that looks like. And, um, I heard, uh, concerns about the impact in terms of equity and parity for employee groups, um, who are not at the same pay scales. And the impact could potentially be greater on one group versus another, and, and what does that look like? So that we have a clearer picture for the board next time we come back together. What did I miss?
I put on here that, um, we'll have a closed session just on the contract.
Yep, I have that.
Place on the agenda for February eighteenth, March four, and potential vote on March eleventh.
Okay.
And in the spirit of inviting feedback and questions and concerns, if we could frame it as proposed changes, rather than the changes. The first statement that you're just gonna tell them about the change, if you can refer it as proposed changes, just to invite.
Thank you for the clarification, because that's what they are now, is proposed.
Can, can you include to be voted on the earliest March eleventh?
March eleventh.
So that they know that this isn't just coming up.
So February eighteen?
March fourth.
March fourth.
Potential vote on March eleventh.
Okay. Thank you.
There is one more thing, I guess I wanted to throw into the mix, maybe it came from a conversation that you and I had at one point, Rhonda. So you get the credit if this was yours. Um, if we're, if we're asking for more, right, we're asking for more towards health costs, we're asking for more out of the pocket to be able to do some big system things, right? Like theoretically, keep, uh, class sizes lower, but, um, the average person may or may not see that difference. So I have the, the district will, will see the difference. I, I would like part, I would like there to be part, some, some discussion. I, I don't have any set ideas for it right now, but maybe this could happen as part of the forums. I, I'd like to know, are there things, and I realize it's not, um, you know, it's not collective bargaining, but we do have meet, and we do have meet and confer with, with units. And we're always open to ideas from, from anybody. Maybe there are some things we can do that if we do have to ask for more on the health side, maybe there's some things that don't cost dollars that we can give back to kind of offset that. And I, I don't, I, I don't wanna create the illusion of promising something by, by just grabbing an idea out of the air. But I just think that would be, could be a valuable part of the conversation. I, I don't, um, I don't know what's, what all is out there. And if I were to guess something, I could be guessing something that people wouldn't want anything to do with. But I think it's, right, cause if the, um, cause you can't just, if you, we can't, it's not like we're in a position where we're just gonna take whatever we save on health and turn right around and put exactly that much on wages, cause then there wouldn't be any savings.
Right.
So I guess I'd like that to be, I'd like that to be open for discussion as we're looking at this.
It's not the savings, it's gonna be less of a shortfall.
Great.
Well, no, that's the same thing. I mean, that, it is, sure, it's, sure it's savings.
So, and, and I appreciate that, thinking about it in a larger context, because we're going into the budgeting, uh, cycle, but also the staffing cycle. So as we're looking at, uh, what kind of efficiencies or reductions through attrition, we might be able to find. We want to keep our class sizes as low as possible. And so there's really three areas to look at. One is, you know, buying less things, less resources. One is reduction in benefits, and other is reduction in staffing. So trying to figure out how that fits and what is the best, um, best formula to look at that budget shortfall will be important for us. But it's also a timing in this piece, because the buildings are, are looking to, to staff their, their, their sites and we're looking at keeping those class sizes low. So, uh, we appreciate the openness and robust conversation. And we also appreciate if, if things can move relatively quickly so that we can make those decisions related to staffing after a month or so of conversation.
Rhonda?
Yeah, I hear all that. I really hope and I, that it's never mentioned though, that it's, well, we're gonna have to increase class sizes. Or it's gonna, you know, you might not get that help, that support in the classroom. I'm concerned about it being framed in that way, that it's a, I mean, I know what you're saying, and I think I actually had mentioned that earlier. But it's more, I mean, maybe it's a matter of just asking staff, what would actually make this easier to swallow for you, right? Versus us dictating everything, we're telling you how it's gonna be, this is what happens if you don't do this. Well, maybe it's a matter of like, what would be easier for them to swallow this, knowing that there could be some budgetary concerns, or there are budgetary concerns. What would make it easier for you to, to sign on and just move, move on with it? Maybe it's just really asking them, and in the meetings with, um, union and whatnot, it's, it's about, you know, asking more, how, how do you feel about this? What do you think, what do you think would make this easier?
I think, um, maybe we've, we haven't, we, I think one of the things that we hear is that people want to know that they are gonna get at least the cost of living and the step increases that we've been providing for educators has been very important to them. So that, that's something that fortunately the district has made, been able to do. So, um.
I worry though about the fact that, so we did that, but now we're increasing, we're gonna increase, we're gonna tax, we're gonna kick people off, we're gonna, I mean, that's what I worry about. It's like, here's a little some, something, well, but actually, don't get too excited, cause here's this. So, and maybe there's something else they would like to ask for.
Yeah.
I think that's a very, very good idea and a wise, wise thing to do. I, I would offer also that, um, we have an opportunity and maybe, obviously, the people who are working right in our schools, right with the children, they may see opportunities for cost savings that we haven't even considered, um, you know, and I've, we've. You know, and I, we can get some possibly really new, fresh ideas in that regard as well. I would ask both. You know, not only, you know, what would make you more comfortable with this, but are there other things that you see that you go, hmm, maybe we shouldn't do that? You know, I'd be interested in that. I don't know if that muddies this water. But I, but I do think that recognizing that there's, there's opportunity to leverage differently, we could. Just want to hear the voice in there.
Yeah, I think those are, those are good questions, and I, I think we'll schedule a few more of the forums, too, and get those posted, and, you know, board members can come.
You know.
We do have a couple more things to go through, one more cost. Should I take you through that, and then wrap up?
I was trying.
Go ahead. There's the.
Yeah, go ahead.
The last thing that will cost some money is the flexible spending account, FSA and health reimbursement account, HRA. We are with a company called Diversified Benefit Services, and we're going to recommend staying with that company. But there is going to be a cost of an additional 15 cents per employee per month for the FSA, and 10 cents for the HRA. We've had good experience with this company. We have, when we converted to this company, we did have to work through some, some issues about the timeliness of payments and such. This would be an increase of $1,545.60 for this company. And then they would have a rate hold for us through June 30th, 2021. So we tip, the board typically votes on these, these changes. So we would bring that forward.
What's their, what's their payment time, timeframe? How good are they?
It's now a week, which is, which is, which is pretty good.
Do you know what their, do you know what their question response time is?
To answer questions, that I don't know. I haven't had a question, but I have submitted to them, and it wasn't a week, and Jennifer worked with them, and now it's a week, sometimes less.
Anecdotally, I can tell you that it's within hours of getting a question answered. Submitted through their, their online inquiry.
Yeah. I just thought I knew of a vendor who is quite better than a week, but if you've checked everyone recently.
We were, we were with another company that was having more issues, and this company is, is better. With the size of our employee group, I think, a week, to me, is a pretty decent turnaround. And it's, and, you know, it's a week in your check, in your company, or company chosen.
Our plan is pretty complex. So there aren't many carriers that can honestly administer it appropriately for us. We've had some issues with, with working through that in the past, and things have been much better with Diversified.
Okay. I have, I mean, I'm thinking of the name of a company, but I'll ask in, I'll ask at a separate time about it.
So then, life insurance, no recommended changes. We have a rate hold until July 1st, 2021. Our vision, our vision, we don't pay for that. It's something we offer to our employees. No changes are recommended. Our income protection plan is something that we also should look at. This is a self-funded plan for the district, and it's like a short-term disability for employees, and we pay employees 82.5% of their regular contracted salary when they're out on short-term disability. And then, we have, we just are expressing some of the changes that you already know about with the Health and Wellness Center, and then the four Bellin clinics that the board approved. And then the physical therapy will be starting in March through Bellin Health.
Any, anything else? Everything on the list that needs to be there? All right. Okay, that was the only, that was the only agenda item? And then, did we determine that we were concluded with the closed session?
I think so.
I believe we did.
I don't know. Can we wait until she gets back? Because I thought she said she wanted to talk about that.
Sure.
Okay. Because I would hate to.
I could move to reconvene, and we can just.
If she wants to come.
We can just decide, yeah, let's just do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we don't need to reconvene, I mean, if we, it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy if you reconvene, though.
All right, we'll wait.
All right, sorry.
You're right.
Should have told her. She knew we were wrapping up. She's going to be embarrassed when she comes back and finds out we're all waiting for her.
And do you need to reconvene, or are we?
We're waiting, you need to reconvene, just the closed session.
Would that call for a vote to do that?
I'd have to read a motion, we'd have to vote, yes.
You know, I wouldn't mind, actually. I would like to do that.
This would be to reconvene to continue our earlier agenda, rather than introducing anything new to it. And move that to board, reconvene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to section 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, Wisconsin statute, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to a superintendent's performance evaluation.
Give her a second.
A second.
Sandy?
Doctor?
Aye.
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Eric, 7-0.
You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.